And you're on.
Thank you, Tina. Good evening. We've already started the meeting in open session. Before going into executive session, we're now reconvening in open session. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. The public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but members of the public can access the meeting by Montague Community Television Broadcast. The extension of the emergency open meeting law provisions were signed into law as Chapter 20, Section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures. It will notify the public of these as is practical, too. The option for public bodies to hold remote meetings have been extended until March 31st, 2025. It was signed into law by Governor Healy as Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Any members of the public who wish to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the Gil-Montague Regional School District website. It can be found under School Committee Notices and Agendas for Upcoming Meetings, and it will have tonight's date by the link. As we are live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV this evening, and a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the district website after the meeting. If you are in our Zoom audience, please remember to keep your camera and microphone off. That will help a lot. We'd like to welcome any visitors that have joined us. This would be the opportunity for public participation. Policy BEDH has been reinstated to hold public participation remotely, but we have not received any requests for that this evening. So we'll move on to important events, Brian.
So just the same four items from the previous meeting. Summer program began on July 5th and continues Monday through Thursday through August 3rd. Friday, August 25th is the new teacher orientation. Monday, August 28th is the first day of school for staff. And Thursday, August 31st is the first day of school for students in grades 1 through 12.
Thank you. And as usual, in the summer, we don't have a student rep report. So we'll move on to the superintendent's report, anything other than events, Brian.
I don't have anything for this meeting, as I had sent out an email earlier that I'm actually on vacation this week or these two weeks. And so I didn't put together a report.
Okay, that's perfectly fine. Thank you. Business and Operations Report. I know Joanne has some things we need to hear about and approve. Joanne?
Hi. So I'm going to start with a summer feeding item. So Molly shared with me that Project Bread will be hosting a summer meals event on Friday, the 21st. And Senator James McGovern will be traveling with them. And so he'll be traveling around with Project Bread to meal sites to increase visibility and accessibility. And you are all invited to attend. The school committee is invited to attend. The public's invited to attend. It will be at Unity Park on Friday, the 21st from, oh my, oh, 11:30 to 12:15 at Unity Park. So we can invite-
That's good. That's good news.
Yeah. So, you know, they suggested we invite school committee, the mayor, you know, if we had one, select board, council members. So I'm also going to share this with the towns and see if we have any town officials that would like to attend.
Great.
Then I'll move on to my other stuff. Okay. So we are still working on closing out the year, fiscal '23. It takes most of the summer to get that done. My goal is always the end of July to be all closed out, but we're usually pushing right through August because there's outstanding invoices. You know, we've ordered stuff, but we haven't gotten all the bills. We haven't received all of the merchandise. So that will all be happening. Local aid, the state has not finalized their fiscal '24 budget. So we don't know exactly where our local aid is going to fall. But I did give you a summary of our fiscal '23 cherry sheet. So our state revenue and our fiscal '24 state revenue. How the cherry sheet comes out, what we budgeted. So we budget based on the governor's preliminary cherry sheet, which is all we have to work with in January when we're finalizing the budget. But sometimes we use, you know, we use our own sense of where we think these numbers are going to land, from what we've heard or what we've seen or, you know, what's been happening in the district. So, you know, if we look at our fiscal '23 budget that we put together back in November to January, November of '21 to January of '22, our school choice and charter numbers were really quite high. And so, but the cherry sheet came out and they were pretty close to where we had budgeted when the final cherry sheet came out. And if you look over to what our actual numbers were in that first section of fiscal '23, you know, they're considerably lower than what we budgeted and considerably lower than what the cherry sheet shows. Because the only thing the state has when they're building our budget, when they're building their budget to base cherry sheet, school choice and charter off of, is who, which students are in which schools at that time. They can't know which students are going to leave school choice or leave charter. And so they can't estimate those things any better than we can. But by the time January gets here, when we're looking at our numbers, we may receive information that we've had, you know, 10 students from choice or charter that are now in our district, and that is improved. So as we built our budget for fiscal '24 back in the fall and early winter, those numbers were still not set, but they were trending in the right way. So you can see that we brought our numbers down in our budget in spite of the governor's budget being higher. So, you know, we do try to work with these numbers, but we're, you know, it, it's a little scary to reduce those numbers by too much. Because if, if those numbers shoot up, we have nowhere else to go to get that money to fund it. So, so we brought them each down a couple of hundred thousand dollars. And that's what enabled us to have the budget and all the positions that we built into the fiscal '24 budget in there. And hopefully, the numbers do continue to drop. And this is a new trend for us. But, you know, we'll have to wait and see what the fall brings. So one of the items that I'd like you to consider is we have the ability to prepay out-of-district special ed tuitions for three months. Not all of them, but some chosen, you know, a few of them. And so we're looking at using some of that surplus that we had from our choice and charter lines to pay for some out-of-district tuition that'll free up money for more flexibility in fiscal '24. And we would pay tuition not to exceed $140,000. So that is something that I'm asking for you to approve. And if you do approve that, then we will do a warrant and our cleanup warrant. And then it'll come to you on July 25th for your vote at that point.
So, okay, so we will need a motion. Tell us exactly how you'd like it worded, Joanne.
Just vote to authorize prepayment of tuitions to two special ed out-of-district schools not to exceed $140,000.
I'll entertain a motion for that. Heather, thank you. And a second?
I'm actually not quite sure I understand it. And I'm actually not going to be here on the 25th to vote on this. I'm going to be in Europe that week.
Actually, we're voting on it now.
Oh, okay. I thought, oh, okay, okay.
Right, Joanne?
Right. The warrant will come on the 25th.
Oh, okay.
And it'll be in a separate warrant, the prepayment of these tuition. So basically, this Mass General Law, Part 1, Title 12, Chapter 71, Section 71D, authorized, I believe back in 2011, the prepayment of tuitions. And it is in order to allow districts to use a surplus and free up money in the following year's budget. Because of these unknowns, that, you know, you build a budget for tuitions that aren't necessarily, they're your estimate, what you think tuition's going to be. And then what really happens could be dramatically different, like it was for us this year, in either direction.
And I think what it is, it's that one or two individual special ed kids can really balloon out of district budget, right?
Yes.
Charter and tech aren't quite as expensive to us because those tuitions aren't, the outflow from our district aren't quite as expensive. And so because we did a little bit better this year on charter, on people going to charter schools, fewer people went to charter schools, we have some savings in that account. And you want to apply that to the special ed account, which can really balloon on us, which is wanted to expand.
Right. This $140,000 could be one student next year.
Okay, so we have a motion. We need a second. If we could have a second and then discuss it, that's usually-
I'll second.
Thank you, Christina. And then Christina, did you have a discussion?
Yeah, where, let's say there wasn't a surplus here. This is an unplanned surplus here it is, but let's say there wasn't. Where would the tuition otherwise come from?
Next year's budget.
Okay. But otherwise, we have $140,000 of surplus. That doesn't necessarily need to go to this. We would otherwise fund it from next year's budget.
Right. But then, you know, if our choice and charter goes back in the other direction next year and balloons back up above our budgeted numbers, or if we have an out-of-district placement that's unanticipated to the tune of $150,000, then we're in the opposite place. We don't have a surplus. We have a deficit, and we can't have a deficit. And so then we have to start making cuts. And it's really hard to come up with a huge amount of money at the very end of the year when, you know, it can't be done in salaries that easily because you only have three months left of the year. But sometimes, like these choice and charter numbers, we don't have the final numbers until June. And so at that point, there's nowhere else to go when it's in deficit. So we've been there, too. We've, we've gone in the other direction and really had to move things around and use more school choice revolving and, you know, try to figure out how to cover this so we're not in deficit. So I've been doing this over 20 years, and I've never run a deficit. But we've come very close. You know, we've had to move things around to make it so it wasn't a deficit. So using these funds to cover 100, up to $140,000, and it may end up being less than that as, as things close out and, and we see where our numbers are landing, it could be less than 140. But if we can authorize this, then it makes next year a little, a little easier to cover if we were to have a high-cost tuition placement early in the year. And we have a couple pending. So we're not really sure where those students are. You know, we always budget back in November, right? We always budget for some unknowns. But we've had more unknowns happen throughout the year that lead to a larger potential for out-of-district placements into future years. Diane?
Hi.
Hi, Diane.
Hello, everyone. I just wanted to be available to see if there were specific questions. I was a little distracted because I was on hold on a call. I have a medical thing scheduled for next week. So I was just trying to straighten that out. Anyway, is there a specific question that perhaps the committee has of me relative to out-of-district placements or?
It's, it's sort of, you know, how we, these unknowns, students move into town. They are placed in out-of-district placement. They're not making it in our public school, and so they need to get sent somewhere.
Correct. The hard thing about, and, you know, it's a terrible analogy, but the analogy that I sometimes use is trying to predict out-of-district special education costs is a little bit like nailing jello to a wall. And that, you know, things shift, things change. We, you know, this past year, we became responsible for a student who was out of state but who last had a relative in, in our community that we are then financially responsible for. So even though this child is not with their family, we are financially responsible for them the way that special education regulations based on residency and assignments work. So that student alone was $100,000. That was not in our budget for FY '23, but we then became financially responsible for. So I, you know, we, we use our resources as best as we can. We try to really, you know, engage in lease restrictive process, really try to make sure that other providers who support children's needs are at the table. So it's not just the district having to be financially responsible. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we certainly have a legal and ethical and moral responsibility to meet the needs of children with disabilities. And we're certainly doing our best.
Thanks, John.
I would guess that this issue with a handful of special ed kids really affecting the budgets of small districts is a fairly common problem with some of the smaller school districts. And it just seems like that kind of problem might lend itself, I, I know it's sort of pie in the sky at this point, to some state relief just on special ed students, not on general transfers out of district. But just because it's not going to be a lot of money in the large picture because it's only going to be two or three students. But two or three students really hurt us in other small districts. And I'm just wondering whether Comberford or some of our educational friends, so to speak, are aware of this particular issue.
There, there is a bill before, if it's not before the legislature, it's proposed to go to the legislature. I was just reading the Mass Association of School Committee bulletin, and it listed all the different items, and that is one, to try for full funding of placement for special ed students that need a specific placement. So that is on the radar. It just isn't necessarily somewhere that we could expect it to happen necessarily quickly.
But there is, there is funding for emergency placements like that. So last year, in fiscal '22, we had an excess amount, I'm not sure how much it was, Diane, of out-of-district placements. And so we filed for extraordinary relief through Circuit Breaker, which is a fund that we can, we can get. And we were awarded $28,000. Now, our cost and excess was probably closer to $200,000 or $300,000 because of the way the calculation works. Students have to reach a certain point individually on their tuitions. And then we get reimbursed 75% for something above that cap that they have to hit. So we probably spend about $60,000 before we ever start getting a penny from the Circuit Breaker, and then we get 75%. But because most of those students last year that brought us over to really, cost us a lot of extra money last year, happened partial years. Many of them were right around that bubble of $60,000. And so while overall, our costs increased significantly, we only ended up with $28,000 for our relief because individually, they didn't reach that threshold. So there is money for these. It just didn't help us as much as we would have hoped.
Right. I think the wording in the new bill is something like full funding, which is a nice term, but when, if it happens, we'll be thrilled.
Yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion. We have a second. Yep, Christina?
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking on our ongoing conversations with teachers and trying to find money to pay them more, which is what they're asking about. And then here we have a surplus. I guess I'm hesitant to vote to spend this surplus right now. I know that you are incredibly fiscally responsible, Joanne, and have never had a deficit for 20 years. So I really trust your guidance on this. But I'm curious if we need to vote now? Does it need to, it doesn't strike me that it needs a prepayment, that this would be the best course of action. But it, given our circumstances with, you know, wanting to find money for teachers, I, I'm wondering, can we delay this vote?
It has to be. We have to finalize our cleanup warrant by July 15th. So this would be part of our cleanup warrant. July 15th is, you know, less than a week away. That's when we need to finalize that. And so that warrant will be dated on July 15th. We just hold on to it to bring it to you on the 25th. But we do need to have it finalized by then.
So we do need a vote today?
Yes.
So a yes vote is to spend the surplus on this prepayment. And a no vote would be to keep the surplus and potentially use it for something else.
Or use it for E and D. It'll roll into E and D. Because the year's over. So July 15th is when we have to pay our bills. And this is the only thing that we can prepay. But the year, June 30th happened, it's over. And so this would just be part of our cleanup warrant.
And John?
Yeah, if, if we did pay this, would that then mean that there's less pressure on next year's budget? And it could lead to potentially more money for the teachers? Or what, which scenario, Joanne, do you think would provide?
It frees up money for potential out-of-district placements, coverage for that, for emergencies, for choice and charter fluctuations?
What effect would it have on our capacity to at least approach the teachers' demands?
It wouldn't have any effect on that because they're asking for the money in year three and four. And year three and four is where we don't know what the money is going to be and where the money, the asset money is gone.
So this vote really would have no impact on, on bargaining then? Is that what you would say?
Well, I don't, I don't think this is really the right place to talk about it. But it really, I really don't think it would impact our ability to know what year three and four look like. It, it's only, this money is only, it's good in fiscal '23 that just ended. We can use it to prepay. It can roll into E and D. Or if we use it to prepay, it frees up money in fiscal '24 that helps us with potential deficits. We've already added five paras, I believe, to the budget that we built and approved. Five paras times $25,000 apiece really equals what we're asking to prepay here. So when we add paras, we add teachers, we add staffing. We need to be able to fund that as well. So really, this 140,000 up to 140,000 could potentially help fund those paras that have already been requested for next year.
Okay, anyone else before we take a vote? Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. I will have a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Thank you. Janice? Janice, you're mute, you're muted. I think I see a yes. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Technical difficulties. I totally understand those. Wendy?
Yes.
It just unwound. Thank you, Janice. Thank you. Wendy?
Wendy, I think you muted yourself. You're unmuted now.
Yes. Thank you. And myself, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And did you have another item under this report, Joanne?
I just have the banking resolutions, but those are in your business section.
Okay, the authorized-
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did. I'm sorry, I did have one other thing. So because the cleanup warrant is due on July 15th, and we'd like to get most of those bills out soon, get the payments out so that way they can come off of our account. So we're not holding on to those checks. We'd really like to not wait until the 25th to bring it back to you for a vote. So if you can authorize Jane to sign the cleanup warrants the week of the 17th, then we can release those checks sooner.
Look, it's not now. And this is just for the accounts payable warrants that are cleaning up what the bills we owe for this year, correct?
For fiscal '23, correct.
Yes. So that's what we need a motion for next. Thank you, Heather.
I'll second.
And Christina, thank you. So this again is to authorize me to sign the final fiscal year '23 accounts payable warrants before the next meeting. Usually, it doesn't happen until we approve it then. But this is to, to clean up the fiscal bills, correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay, any questions? In that case, we'll do a roll call. Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
You can swing back in one second.
Okay, we will. Wendy?
Yes.
And the chair's supposed to vote last, so I'm just sort of waiting.
Yes.
Okay, I see her. I hear her. Thank you. And myself, yes. Thank you. Okay, anything else, Joanne, for us today?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move along to the school committee reports. The warrants are for fiscal year '24. We have three of them. If it's acceptable, I'll read them, and then I'll entertain a motion to approve them all at once. For fiscal year '24, there's an accounts payable warrant, number 3403, in the amount of $36,343.19. Also fiscal year '24, there's a middle school student activity warrant, number 3401, from the amount of $327.81. And another high school student activity warrant, number 3402, in the amount of $1,233.82. Those are all bills that need to be paid. I'll entertain a motion to vote to approve those.
And I'll second.
No, you can be the first, John, because I'm just-
I'm sorry. I so moved, sorry.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you, Wendy. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will call for a roll call vote. Heather?
Oh my God, my phone's ringing and I'm fixing your computer, yes.
You don't have enough to do, fix the computer into the phone. That's a yes? Thank you. John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Thank you. Janice? We'll come back. Wendy?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Janice. And myself, yes. Thank you. Moving on to the business portion, we need to approve banking resolutions for Wilmington Trust. We will need a vote on that. Joanne, explain that to us.
Okay, so when we were with People's Bank and they switched to M and T Bank, they took our scholarship trust account and they sent it off to Wilmington Trust. And so when they did that and our treasurer was the same treasurer, they just gave her access and she continued to be able to do what she needed to do. So when Kami came on as our new treasurer, she didn't have access to Wilmington Trust because when we changed the banking resolutions for M and T, we didn't think to add Wilmington Trust as one of the banking resolutions. So the Wilmington Trust is just to give Kami access to that so she can make adjustments and manage those scholarships. We're gonna do both, Jane?
Um, you want to do them together, the Greenfield Savings Bank as well resolution, or you want to do them separately?
I think we'd done together, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
The other is sign banking resolution for the Greenfield Savings Bank.
Right, so Greenfield Savings Bank has, the resolution's always been done the way it, it was and the way you approved it last. But what Kami found is that it didn't give her access to be a signer on the checks, which means she really couldn't do transfers. She was just a read-only. So in order to do transfers, she really needed to have this access. I'm not sure how that wasn't required for Cynthia, but the bank never said we need to change it. So this will give her access to be a signer of those accounts.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve banking resolutions for Wilmington Trust and the Greenfield Savings Bank revised. Heather, thank you.
I'll second.
And Christina, seconded. Any question about those? All right, in that case, we'll take a roll call vote. Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Thank you. Uh, the next item is a discussion about the Open Montague School Committee seat. We have not received any letters of interest as yet. We will still be accepting any letter of interest from someone who is a resident of Montague who'd like to fill our one open seat. Um, the letter of interest may be sent either in an actual letter or an email to Superintendent Beck's office. And we would like them by the 24th, so if we have one, we can vote it on the 25th, which is our next meeting. John?
Um, so I'm counting. Wendy, are you a member of the school committee?
Yes, yes. But John, um, we are supposed to have nine.
Oh, nine, I thought it was eight.
No, six and three. John Reynolds was able to join us briefly, but then he was not able to continue. So the open seat is a Montague one.
Is, is there any reason why we couldn't reduce the number to eight?
Oh, yes. It's a regional agreement that is cast in stone. May it never be changed. Oh, please, it's such a complicated procedure. Someday, John, we'll chat. Because there are many things in there. It'd be nice to update, but once you opened that Pandora's box, it is, the state has said, watch it. Um, someday, we will. But that was agreed on, I think, in the 70s, if I'm remembering correctly. Joanne?
Yeah, I actually put a request out to Christine Lynch, who is the regional
Yes.
expert on the state. And she gave us a whole laundry list of things that would have to be corrected in our regional agreement should we open it to change the number of seats. So it's possible, but it's quite the process.
Well, and you would have to know that the two towns would agree to change the percentage of seats. And that's what we've, I, I've been a member at the state level of a regional schools committee subcommittee. And that's what Christine from, um, the state has told us. If you open your agreement, you have to change almost anything that anybody wants to, as well as specifics in it. So you, it's a large process. And she's the one who helps you look at it when you do it to see if it's a, and then they have to approve it at the state level before you can do it.
Yeah, it's possible.
Uh huh. Maybe when I'm no longer chair, perhaps.
I mean, really, I mean, a school district with 800 kids, finding nine people from, you know, what lucky kids, you know, they've got more than one school board member per hundred kids.
That's a nice way to think about it. I like that. Thanks. Anything else before, but we would like, if anybody knows anyone, please recommend that they send us a letter. Um, we would be happy to have one more member.
Question?
Sure.
Um, is there a way to get access to the list of retired teachers from the district?
Um, Don't know.
Just, just thinking, like, those might be, that might be a good pool of people to reach out to. Um, that would be good to have on the committee.
And you'd think it'd be a motivated group too, because then they could bring their arguments to the board and express them articulately.
I think that's a great idea. It's how I got here. I retired and then somebody said, why don't you get on school committee? And apparently that's when I said yes, and I ran. And that was 12 years ago, so here we are. But it'd be great, be great to have another retired teacher. Not all of them live in the town, so that's an issue. And I had to be from Gil because I live in Gil. But, but it's certainly a great suggestion for sure. If you know of anyone, spread the word. Be great.
Is that information that we could get access to? And that's probably protected from, for privacy?
I, right, I don't know as we would have the authority to disseminate that. What do you think, Brian?
I'm not sure. I could ask the attorney. Um, but we, at the very, at the very least, would have access to, the easiest list would be those retirees who are paying health insurance. Um, because obviously there, there, some element of their files are still active in the business office.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's good to ask the lawyer just to make sure, you know, whatever might be acceptable. Good point, good point. Okay, the next item, um, the MASSS, that's Mass Association of School Superintendents and Mass Association of School Committees Joint Conference will be held in Hyannis, November 8th through 10th of this year. Um, anyone who would like to attend on the committee, um, the, we have, the district will pay for our membership, our ability to attend the conference itself, including the meals. Um, and you will need to be signed up by July 14th to get the early bird price, which is less than, you can sign up until it happens practically in November, but if you sign up by the 14th, it costs less. And if anyone is interested in, you do have to, um, register for your own hotel room and then you can get reimbursed for that, but you have, the district can't register you for the hotel. Heather?
I haven't been in a few years, so I'm considering it. Um, are you going, Jane?
I am. I've been going for 12 years now and, you know, I always learn something. I keep thinking, maybe I'll know all there is, but it hasn't proved to be true. And, and it's a good way to problem solve with people in other districts. It is, it's always very educational. They're long days. I will say the conference starts early and goes right past dinner because there are speakers at dinner. Uh, but it's a great experience. It sure is.
Yeah, we had a great time the last time, but yeah, it's chock full. Um, yeah, I think I'd like to go again.
Okay, great. So you can either register yourself or since it needs to be a purchase order, Tara could register you?
I can do that.
And I'll, thank you, Tara. And all you need to do, Heather, is do your own hotel room. And then that will be reimbursed later. Okay, thanks. And anyone else interested? I do recommend it. It's, it's quite interesting. Okay.
I'll, I'll need Heather, though. Why don't you take a look at the website and tell me about the meals and we can make the appropriate adjustments?
Will do.
Thanks.
Right, and I can tell you the one that doesn't have a speaker or anything, so, yep. Okay, thanks. Um, included in your packet is a copy of the last school committee multi-year goals. And we included it, um, so that people could read it and think about it. So at a future meeting, it is time actually to think about either reconfirming that these goals are what we'd like or modifying them, changing them, updating them. These go through, um, 2024, so it would be nice if we worked on them at some point before they expired. We also, um, I think even before we did the last set of goals, our committee at the time came up with an anti-racist statement that, um, we will send in an email. It's not attached to the goals. We thought it would be, but it was not attached to the goals, correct, Brian? Okay, so we will, we will be sending that to everybody as well. It would be nice to work on them both together and then um, combine them so that they could be found in the same spot. And that's always a good process to work on, looking at what our goals are. And the last item under business is looking at remote in-person school committee meetings. I'm kind of hoping that we could at least pick a meeting in the future to start where people would be able to all attend in person. If people have their calendars, their work requirements, their home requirements, so they can sort of guess when they might be able to do that. Um, it would be really nice if we could. I mean, I know remote does enable people to do it when they have to be at home or at work, but it would be good to at least, uh, for some of the meetings. Anyone have a theory looking forward, anyone that might work?
I, I, I'm open to any, I, I'll be able to attend any open meeting. And I'm in favor, if possible, to hold open meetings because I think we've lost, um, you know, public buying from the meeting, but I also know it's difficult for some people.
I know you did say you wouldn't be available on the 25th, I believe?
Yes, I'm, I'm actually, the 25th, I'm gonna be, and I won't attend that meeting at all because I'm gonna be out of the company.
Okay. Heather?
Um, Janice and I aren't available the second week of August.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the next two meetings are good for me.
Are or they aren't?
They are, but John came the 25th and Heather and Janice came the August 8th. Um, just, just for me, it, I don't have travel plans um, for Tuesdays for the next month or so, but I don't know into the fall. And that might, it might get challenging for me into the fall. Um, I might have work travel.
Yeah. Heather, did you say you weren't available the 22nd or the 8th?
The 8th.
Okay, well, how about the 22nd then? How does that look? Let's put it this way, does anybody know they absolutely would not be available to meet in person at the high school in the school committee room, which is on the second floor, by the way? Okay, then let's have that a go. On the 8th, and we can check with Bill and Nick, who are not able to be with us tonight, to see if the 8th in person. I know the room is prepared and I know, um, that part is all set, so let's try for August 8th to begin with. And then we can look ahead, maybe by then, people who do have schedules, you know, in the future, might have a better idea by then of what they might be. So, um, anyone that that does not work for, just give me a thumbs down if it doesn't. John?
I thought Heather and Janice were away on the 8th of August.
I'm sorry, 22nd. Did I again misspeak? You're here the 22nd, right, Heather? Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I was thinking about, well, not thinking. So we're looking at the 22nd in person. That would give people a fair amount of time to, you know, make sure that that would work for them. And we would still begin at 6:00 if we need an executive session, otherwise at 6:30. Okay, so we will try for August 22nd. Sounds, thank you so much. Um, if you have agenda requests, we will meet about a week from now to look at our next agenda. Please get it to Bill, Brian, or myself. Our next two scheduled meetings are July 25th and August 8th. And those will still be virtual at this point. Heather?
Sorry, I just, um, Tara asked me to look at the site, so I did. And I just want to mention that the theme this year is investing in equitable school districts, so I know that that's something that we all care a lot about. You might find some really, really great speakers there.
And I think the new Secretary of Education will be speaking. I think that's often true, either the commissioner or the secretary or both. Usually speak at one of the, uh, either keynote or during, during one of the dinner meetings, usually. That's to be found there.
Sorry, and to just continue, when Jane and I went, I think somebody else went, and even the superintendent generally goes, so, um, we try to like plan our schedule so we each can go to different meetings so that we can all kind of um, mind hive the, the conferences best we can, because there really is just some really great information and you, it's, you just couldn't, you can't get to half of it, so.
Right, usually each-
The more we can see.
Yeah, each session, there's usually three to five offerings. And it usually ends up where there's two that you really want to go to at the same time. So we often will meet if there's more than one person and we will, um, decide, you know, so that we can get the information. It's really quite useful. And, and it's true, Superintendent Brian's going, right, Brian? Okay. Alrighty, I guess that pretty much covers it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
No, you can make the motion.
I, I'm so moved, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll just put the words in your mouth. We're all good. We need a second, please?
Janice?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, I think Janice started first, so we'll take Janice. I know it's a little trickier now because we have to be, you know, muted in between, so it does take a little delay, but we're all good, we're all good. We have a motion, we have a second, we'll take a roll call vote to adjourn. Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Janice?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
And me, yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, thanks, Tina.